The school board meeting will begin in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in two minutes. The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening. The May 24, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. Before we start tonight's meeting, I would like for us to take a moment of silence for those victims of the school shooting that happened at Robb Elementary School in Evolde, Texas this afternoon. Thank you. Our hearts and prayers are going out to that school district and those families that are being affected by the situation. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats, turn off their electronic devices, or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be allotted for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customary takes action, you must first complete a pitch form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedure applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Dan Brown, District 2. Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here. Thank you, Elaine. Mr. Mark Ingram, Program Specialist, Secondary English and World Languages, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in our pledge tonight.
Good evening, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members King and Thrower, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. I'm excited to be here tonight to introduce the winners of the Bridges Project essay contest. The mission of the Bridges Project of Calamarion County is to break through barriers among racial and social groups and individuals to build pathways to understanding for the reduction and elimination of conflict. Representing them here tonight are Reverend Peggy Hostetler, President Barbara Phytos, and Jill Corel. They're going to be handing out awards to our student contest winners. This year, contestants wrote about how students can work together to help break the cycle of bullying. At the junior level, the third place winner was Alexander Hernandez in Mrs. Ernest's class at Howard Middle. Second place also went to one of Mrs. Ernest's students, Caleb Lopez. First place went to Kaylee Golightly from Mrs. Fiesler's 7th grade class at Liberty Middle School. They're receiving prizes from the Bridges Project. We also have senior winners, and they're all 9th graders from Lake Ware High School in Mr. John Gibbs' class. They are in third place, Rin Bear. Yahir Reyes in second place, and in first place, Carly Sexton. There are also honorable mention winners, Savannah Delgado, Kite Little, and Jalen Wesley at the senior level, and at the junior level, Armin Shirazi, Robert Way, and Sheri Zoo.
And Kev, we're gonna come down. We're gonna come down and take a picture with them as well.
Thank you. Thank you. And now, Yahir Reyes is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, let's give those kids a great big hand. Thank you to the Bridges Project for putting forth an opportunity for them to write and to bring about a change. Thank you, guys. Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the board. Great to see you all this evening. I recommend approval of the agenda for May 24, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included, pardon me, as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of item D 24.1 that has been placed under discussion, and item C 11.1, C 11.2, C 11.3, C 11.4, C 12.1, C 12.2, C 21.1, and C 23.1 that have been pulled for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion.
Moved by Board Member Throw, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose have the same signs. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 21, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Throw. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table on the lobby. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to additional people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to procedures for public comments, item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator, staff member, following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students is also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any speakers tonight?
Yes, sir, we do. Ms. Kirsten Angel?
Good evening, board members. My name is Kirsten Angel, and I live at 2055 Southeast 50th Terrace in Ocala, Florida. I have many concerns related to the school system, but tonight I want to address one in particular, and that is in regard to the taxes and the curriculum. We, the school board, the school members here in Marion County were asked once to pass a one-mill tax, and I voted for that. I voted for that because the school needed improvements. We then were asked to pass a one-mill tax again. I again voted for that. This time, most, the main thing was they added the protection of the school, the school idea in terms of fencing and things that were needed to protect the schools because of the problems that we had in the state of Florida. And again, like I say, I voted for that. There is now a one-mill tax that is coming up on the school system yet again, and I can tell you at this point in time, I'm not voting for it. And the reason I'm not voting for it is because the first time I voted for it, our school system went down. The second time I voted for it, our school system went down. I'm not voting for it a third time because I can't afford for our school system to go down anymore. We're already practically at the bottom as it is, and that is not acceptable to me. What I want the school system to do is to focus on reading, writing, arithmetic, chemistry, social studies, those things that the school system is supposed to do. What the school system should not be doing, and I know that there was a school board member who, you know, pointed out to me that this is an issue of the legislation. I understand that this is an issue of the legislation. However, you all make the policy for this school system. What I'm asking you to do is to make the policy for this system that is best for this community, and that would be to put the social and emotional learning things at the bottom of the pack. Yes, you have to do them, but you don't need to put them high on the priority list. And for these reasons, I tell you that we've got to focus on our curriculum, and raising more taxes and more taxes and more taxes is not gonna get it. And there's one other issue that I definitely need to raise, and that is recently in regard to an Ocala Gazette article. You talked about the school board, and you talked about, oh, we've got to increase funding, and we've got to, you know, deal with the overcrowding. Granted, that's a problem. I don't know exactly what all the issues are, but yet, as I read the article, I understand you're asking us yet to pay more and more and more taxes because you want to build more and more and more schools. I have a major problem with that. I hope you will consider that situation greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angel.
Ms. Cheryl Chappell?
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Chappell. I live at 13607 Southwest 33rd Circle, Ocala, Florida. I was speaking to a friend of mine. His name is Steve Sweat. He couldn't be here tonight, so he asked me to read this letter to you guys. After attending the last Marion County School Board Workshop meeting on May 19, it is apparent county commission successes promoting growth has caught the current school board off guard. We need to start making effective proactive decisions, take definitive action to solve the predicted school crisis. The current lack of adequate schools, particularly in the southwest area of Marion County, must be addressed and a long-term solution implemented. My suggestion requires the school board to act with urgency. The school board needs to change the wording on the one-mill property tax ballot currently before the county commission for the November 2022 election to wording that will fund new school construction. The current programs currently funded can easily be transferred to the general operating funds. This will enable a building schools initiative without additional taxation requests beyond what already exists. The one-mill tax will generate an estimated $29 million per year if approved by voters. I believe the current school board needs to act fast and decisively to present this solution to the voters on the November ballot. Okay, so the reason why I came was I wanted to make the suggestion that I found that Steve and I are in complete agreement upon, and it's to sell the old school headquarters building on Southeast Street ASAP after doing your due diligence. Reasons being, it's not suitable for school. It's close to warehouse property that can also be sold. You're a school board, not a historic preservation committee. The building will cost millions to bring up to stand, so it needs to be sold. Okay? I live in Marion County, I live in Marion Oaks, first of all. I go to the meetings, I talk to neighbors. They don't care about an expensive historic relic. They care about a high school in Marion Oaks. Right now, their options is Donnellin and Westport. I know that you guys have property, the school board owns properties south of Summer Glen, where the sheriff's department is keeping cattle. I mean, perhaps that could be, you know, a high school. I don't know. But please take these suggestions into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Jones?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Latricea Jones. I'm gonna get my post office box because I don't want my personal address to be out here publicly, but my post office box is PO Box 6003, Ocala, Florida, 34479. I am a resident here. My husband's a retired deputy sheriff, and we've been here for some time now. I have an organization called Grandmas for the Generations, and I provide the opportunity for a lot of these children to get their volunteer hours. And I have some concerns at this, at the current time in reference to the conversations that I have with the parents, and most importantly, the children, because for me, it's about these kids. Sometimes adults tend to get in the way with their own ideologies opposed to staying focused on the issue at hand, and that's the future generation of these children. I'm gonna share some things with you currently, just from conversations that I've had with these children and their parents. Just to let you know, my organization has 2,568 parents that are registered voters in this county. 2,568. That's the first thing. Now, I'm gonna start over here at Westport. When I have children volunteering with me, and they're telling me they have bars on the window and one basketball to play with, we have an issue. We have a major issue. These kids have to be able to have the resources that they need. These school board budgets are astronomical. Astronomical. So I'm letting you know, I am here to make sure. I am a mother, and I am a grandmother, and if I don't speak up for these children, nobody else will. That's the first school. The next school, out in Fort McCoy, why do I have parents and kids telling me they're allowed to go to school, and inside the school, they can be anything they want to be, whether it be a boy or a girl? Now, I'm very confused on what type of agenda we're pushing here for these children. This is coming from the children, not adults, the children. And then they're telling me how confused they are. Then another concern that I have, out in Fort McCoy, those poor white kids have to have a voice too, because poor is poor. It's not about color. Poor is poor at the end of the day. So that is a concern to mind. The agendas that we are pushing with these children, and when parents are telling me that it's messing their kids up, we have a problem, boys and girls. The next one, Howard Middle School. I have parents over there, and I'm begging these parents to start coming to these meetings because they have to be educated on where the money goes and how it works. I am begging them to come because I said this is where their voice is. It's not in the schools raising heck with those teachers. It's over here, sitting in this place here that should be filled. Filled. And that was the first, second, that's the third school. Then I go over to Stan Weersdale. I stand on the porch of a woman's house that tell me a district that has not changed in 80 years, and I hear foolishness. And on the black side, it's not a sidewalk from property that the school board owns? That's progress to me. My grandmother died at 122 in this country that we built. We built. So I advise this school board, because I don't need your opinions, but I want to let you know that we have to start doing a better job of listening to these children and not getting so politically correct, because it doesn't matter what your party stance is. It's about how we treat them. And I'll address this board as well when I sit there, and I have meetings with these parents, require them to sit down and watch these school board meetings. And when I listen to you guys so disrespectful to each other, you have a senior citizen up there that's 82 years old, old enough to be your parents as well as mine. How I was raised, if I liked them or not, I still respect them. This school board has to be the example for the children and for the parents, and I'm just here to let you know that we are watching. And as a grandmama, I carry a big stick, a big stick, because somebody fought for me. Our families only want to be able to have the right to speak who they are, tell their own stories. We didn't care about being, we were already equal. We just wanted books, bathrooms that we can go to with everybody else. And my name is Latricea Jones, and like I say, I carry a big stick, and 2,568 voters as well care about these kids first.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Mr. Daniel King?
My name is Daniel King. I live at 12600 Southwest Highway 484 in Donnellin, Florida. And it's interesting, what we've already talked about tonight, and what I wanted to present, is over the past few months, I've heard different people talking about how that these meetings are nothing, I don't like to use it that way, but it's really just a budget. We're talking about budgets. We're not talking about how we're gonna get better. Marion County, y'all have admitted in these meetings, is at the low, low end in Florida, and yet we're one of the fastest growing communities in the United States. And we do have a huge train wreck coming up with the kids in the southwest part of the county. And I want to challenge this board and whoever the next board is gonna be this fall to look at this agenda, to get the parents out here. I've appreciated Board Member Don's appeal to the parents to come to these meetings, but I don't know that they have a reason to come, because we talked about budget. We talked last time or the time before, possibly having a morning meeting and an evening meeting to get more people in, and I think that, I think we keep the two meetings and maybe have another, I know it's one more meeting. I don't need more meetings in my life, but talk about the budget where you can really examine it. I appreciate Don's digging in. Why is this important? Why is this important to spend this, and often it is very important to spend it? But as other people have said too, our focus has to be on reading, writing, and arithmetic, not all the rest of this stuff, all the woke things going on in our society. I have thought, and I've said, Marion County, I think, is better than most places around the country, a lot of places around the country. I know that Florida is. I know that Marion County is. But it concerns me that we don't, you have meetings, workshops, and I have not gone to one. I watched quite a few of them, and you do talk about things and everything, but parents don't know what the answers are. Parents don't know why we need to have maybe a pre, pre, preschool. Parents don't understand why we need to have these things, and I think this forum here, I'm challenging you to look at this. I'm challenging the next board that comes on board here this fall, whoever is gonna be changed or remain, but to focus on getting us at a much higher level in the state of Florida. And I guess that's really, you know, really what I really want to talk about. And also, what this last speaker mentioned about is she's hearing parents talk about kids coming in, they're confused about gender and things like that, that I somehow in my, I guess I hoped that we weren't having a lot of that stuff there. Now we're hearing about more and more around the country, these hidden classes that the parents don't know about, that the kids go to, and it's being covered up by the teachers. How much of that is going on in Marion County? How much? And what are we doing to protect that? What are we doing to stop that? I'm not trying to judge a lot of different things. I'm saying that we need to know, and the parents need to know, where our tax dollars are going. Are they going to build a school? Are they going to get a better curriculum? What are we doing about the What are we doing about the 41% or whatever it is of the math books that were rejected? I, as a grandparent, would want to know that. I, as a parent, would want to know that. What is the board doing so that I can know that I'm happy to have my kids in the Marion County public schools? And I could say, well, and a lot of my friends have said, well, we're just going to put them in a private school, church school, whatever. And I don't think that, a lot of those have been, lost their credibility too. But I'm speaking to the parents right now that have done that as I would if I had any young children now. We still need to be involved in the Marion County public school system to be the influencers in our community, not just the influence. And to see the new board, this board, to continue on and improve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joseph Prohsaka.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Prohaska, P-R-O-H-A-S-K-A. First thing I want to do is thank the staff for largely having caught up on the meeting minutes. It is noticed and it's greatly appreciated. Couple of months ago, I sent a memorandum to each of the board members with regarding meeting procedure and some suggestions regarding Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised, the esteemed Edition 12. Robert's Rule of Order Newly Revised in Brief, a summary for those of us who don't have much time for reading. And I also had some questions for the board about the meeting procedure and some avenues for making things a little bit more effective. I was agnostic about whether the board was likely to adopt any of my suggestions. But I thought that it would be, well, educational all around. My main point was to try to make the meetings more efficient, also easier for citizens to follow, more clear, and to free up more time to focus on more important things. So regardless of whether the board takes the suggestions such as having a special rule, a policy to clarify what items should be on the consent agenda, which ones don't need to be on the agenda at all, which absolutely mandatorily require discussion. Whether that happens or not, life will go on. But the more we can focus on that, the better. So I didn't really want to distract the board from the substance of their meetings, but I did want to make some suggestions about making them more efficient. The only thing I would beg for is proper voice vote procedure. So it doesn't make any sense to call for the favorable votes and the opposing votes by the same sign. That may make sense in other forms of voting, such as standing or raising your hands. But in a voice vote, it's very simple. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. And then you can decide whether the vote, whether the motion carries or not. So I beg you, please do that properly in the future. I would now like to address the events of February 22 and issues of free speech and other civil rights. The school board members, you are citizens and you were selected by the citizens of Marion County to work for the citizens of Marion County as a policy-setting organization to benefit primarily students and represent the people paying the bills. At no point were you elected to make law or implement disciplinary actions on citizens you may disagree with. Now, free speech is a difficult pill to swallow at times. Reviewing the events of February 22, and I was there personally, I think it was blown way out of proportion. It was, to put it baldly, handled badly. We had some elderly women come up. It struck me that they were a little bit combative. But it was clear they were following some sort of script that they had. And at some point, they wanted to serve papers. These signs that are on the stage here were not there then, so they needed to serve them, I guess. So they thought, oh, go up the stairs and serve them. And then there was, from my point of view, sort of a histrionic overreaction about these elderly women going up the steps to serve the papers. They were chased back down and were obviously flustered. So they didn't know what to do with the papers, so they walked up to the stage and they tossed them down. And that's it. At no point was there any crisis, was there any danger whatsoever. So I think there was great overreaction and then overreaction to the overreaction where people were prevented from returning here and participating. And I want, the school board felt it had the authority to deny a citizen's right to free speech as evidenced by a quote reported in the local paper by a school board member. Let me read that to you. Schmidt will only miss six more meetings. He just missing 30 minutes of potential speaking time. I find that astonishing. He shouldn't miss any speaking time. Mr. Schmidt stayed out of public space.
Your time, your time is expired, so finish.
Thank you.
Finish your thought and then...
Just that he is trying to let it resolve itself. And I encourage the board to kind of put this behind and resolve it in a graceful way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. May I have a motion to adopt the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan and Shelter Plan?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. King, seconded by Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. The Comprehensive Emergency Plan and Shelter Plan complies with 1001.43 Florida statutes and Board Policy 2.25.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan and Shelter Plan? Any discussion? All ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposers have the same sign. It passes unanimously. At this point in the agenda, a public hearing was scheduled before a hearing officer for any petitions filed regarding the 16 specified courses approved by the board at April 12, 2022 school board meeting. Since no petitions were filed by the May 12, 2022 deadline, there is no need for the public hearing to proceed and staff may begin the ordering process of the materials for the courses approved by the board on April 12, 2022. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items, C9.1 through C23.1, with the exception of Items D24.1 that has been placed under discussion, and Items C11.1, C11.2, C11.3, C11.4, C12.1, C12.2, C21.1, and C23.1 that have been pulled for discussion. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thore. Seconded by Board Member King. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the intent to name the early learning facility?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thore. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Second Amendment with Houghton Mifflin Harcourt Publishing Company?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled Item C11.1. Need further discussion?
Yes, I did, Chair. Thank you. The the items, and we hear this on a regular basis, how important education is to what we do. It's our mission. And how much we spend, it's our mission to be prudent with the dollars. This is a $2.3 million item that should be brought forward. Programs like this, especially when we're failing, when we're in a downhill spiral or a downhill slope. And I don't mean that to denigrate the efforts of anyone. I mean it to say that we have to be diligent. We have to look at every single thing that comes forward. This is a, this is a program that helps with education. It helps with math. It's $2 million. That's an enormous amount of money. And so what we have to do, I believe, is routinely address these things and not consider, as it's been termed, that I threaten to pull these things out, that it is my duty, I promise, to pull these out and bring them forward so that we can talk about items like this. And if in fact, people want to address them or board members want to address them, they can. And we can move through most of these rather quickly. But the fact that they come forward and we actually speak to them. When you go on the internet, there is no speaking. You can read something on the internet, but you're not going to hear what these board members have to say. You're not going to hear what Board Member Don Browning has to say. You're going to just have to go out there and figure it out for yourself. And I think you come here to hear what we have to say. It's a business meeting. It's not a rubber stamp to stamp. And I call it under the table because I can't see the individual items. So I do pull them and I put them on top of the table. And yes, it's a little bit of oratory on the subject, but it's critically important. This is $2.3 million and it's a program that we use. And we've been failing. So every single thing we use, no matter, it's the route to school, examine it, decide, is this having an impact on the way we're not achieving? And this isn't just us. It's all. It's all. We're being measured against all the districts across Florida. And we're not doing well. And we need to do better. And that isn't to discourage. It's to say, folks, pick it up. We're in a marathon. If we intend to cross and gain the number one, you know, win the blue ribbon, let's get, let's pick it up. Let's look at every single item. So that's why I brought this forward. Is it working? I want to know. I want to know from the superintendent. I want to know by, from the folks we have out there. We've got some brilliant minds. I want to know the lacking on these items. And I want to know the parts that we just, that are sterling and absolutely getting the job done. So that's why we're here. That's the business meeting aspect of that. So with that, I'll leave it to my fellow board members to give their thoughts. But this is a big amount of money. And if we do it another time, I want to be further ahead, not at a lower altitude, getting closer and closer to, using the aviation metaphor, closer and closer to a crash. I want to get up and I want to get to altitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Browning, for pulling this item. I am grateful to have the discussion. For this particular item, what I see is that it was just approved a year ago. And because it was approved at a much lesser amount at that juncture for both math, and so to read a little bit more about this for those who don't have the agenda item in front of them, the Math 180 program is an engaging and motivating digital math intervention program. And then we also have the Read 180 that's a learning solution that's proven to raise reading achievement. And there are multiple other things there that it mentions about it. Because our team started using this about a year ago, I guess, and they have found that it has been increasingly significant and helping our students without having the full data on what we've actually looked like in the 2021, 2022 school year with the recommendation that they are making for us to expand our partnership with this particular, these particular curriculums, curriculum. I see that there's a reason for us to move forward with it. Again, without having the full data, I guess you could say, to look at exactly what has occurred over the entire school year thus far. But with our team noticing the improvements and noticing those students that have been significantly impacted by these programs, I see no reason for us not to continue to do this and expand in this area. This is a part of what our grant funds through the ESER program are intended to be used for, for curriculum to help make up those learning deficiencies that were experienced throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. That's what the ESER funds are for. They are federal funds specifically for us to do things like this and intervention types of scenarios. And so that's why I see raising this is not a problem for me. Granted, when this does come back around, if it does come back around next year, then I believe we can ask those questions. Have we seen the significant growth? And have we seen the movement that we anticipated with this additional purchase that we're making at this time?
Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Second Renewal Agreement with Teacher-Created Materials, Inc.?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you also pulled Item C11.2 for further discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This particular one, it's very similar to the one we just did. And again, this needs to be examined. It started some years back, 2019, was the original agreement. It makes learning more fun. I want to be sure that we get items like this out. This is a million dollars and it's a round million dollars. That always scares me because money that is fought for goes down to the penny, as far as I'm concerned, when you're spending. I don't like big, general, round numbers when you're buying. It's just too easy, especially when it's somebody else's money. These are, this helps with Spanish to English. It helps with, makes learning more fun, it says. There are a lot of great things and great ideas, great ways. I love language. I love learning language. I love to consider, in a foreign country, everyone that is walking beside me that has a native language, that they are a dictionary, a walking, talking, instructional dictionary at my disposal. And that's the way I learn languages when I'm in any foreign country. And I would like to see that kind of tutoring, that kind of mentality toward making learning more fun. It is an incredibly important thing to do, to learn language. And so again, I bring this up. I'd like to see discussion. I love what Ms. Campbell just said. And that you would not find on the internet. You will only find it here with board member being willing to provide that insight. And next year, you bet, we need to look hard at each one of these things that comes along. And they should be on top of the table every single time. This is a million dollars. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed have the same sign. Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Third Amendment with Explorer Learning LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thore.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Brown, I understand you pulled Item C11.3 for further discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Again, this falls in the same category. And it's so exciting to know that we have this redundant opportunity. And it's absolutely every one of these things. This is a, it's over my $100,000 level. $100,000 gets it on the top. $100,000 gets it on the top of the table for me. So I, I say, wow, how exciting. And I want everybody to know, when they're out there looking at these or when they come to the meetings, that these are the kind of things that will add up to big dollars. 10% of 700, 700 million dollars plus, or when we arrive at a billion, will be $70 million. It's a huge amount of money. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Third Amendment with Read Naturally, Inc.?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member King, seconded by Board Member Thora.
Second.
And Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled Item C 11.4 for further discussion.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chair. Again, a million dollars must be on top of the table. This isn't to improve reading. I want to know how well it did. And I want to know specifically how well it did. Each time we do one of these million-dollar operations, I want to know what the teachers think. I want to know what the community thinks, what they're seeing in terms of the kids' reading. Something that I would like to see advanced, and it doesn't cost a nickel, and that is have your five favorite authors. Five favorite authors, whether it's Solzhenitsyn, it's Hemingway. You want to go down adventure as a young, young man, Samuel Clemens. Do you, five favorite authors? And you begin to read and you really do enjoy. And every teacher that we employ, everyone that touches a student, you don't need a million dollars to do this. Or you can make it a million dollars more effective with that idea and many ideas that the teachers have. So it doesn't come from away and afar and spending money. It comes from, and I'm not necessarily against it, but I want to, I want to really get these things, this million dollars, on top of the table. And I would like to see everyone join in. I would like to see a plethora of five favorite authors. Someone has impacted your life and I guarantee you it will impact your reading. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve First Renewal with Human Potential Healthcare Workforce Solutions LLC?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member Thora, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled Item C 12.1 for discussion.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Chair. This is just under my $100,000 threshold, 50 to 100,000. So it fits in that category. And this is mental health wellness when we don't have somebody else on, on call. I believe that volunteers, and we have a retirement community. I believe volunteers, even if you're currently working, you're currently a nurse. I believe that we could save this $100,000 and, and draw in powerful, powerful volunteers. And, and we could celebrate them. This is a $90,000 program. I believe we could develop a volunteer program that would mitigate these costs, perhaps in half. I'll go along with this once, but I believe that, that volunteers in a, in a, in a district like we have, nursing, I've been around nurses in my entire life with my career, and they are ready and able to volunteer and to come in and, and get the job done. So I would like to see that be addressed in that, on an emergency basis because they come in at all hours often and get called in to get the job done when there is some sort of a need because there's, there's a lack of somebody on, on board at that moment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Ms. Campbell?
Sure, I, I'll just add to that just a bit, just for clarification on what this actually, the way I read it. And if I'm reading it incorrectly, then someone please correct me. But we do utilize the nurses and the available nurses through the Florida Department of Health. This contract is specifically for an agency that we can utilize in the event that those nurses with the Florida Department of Health are unavailable. And these are services for students with very complex medical issues. So while I would be all in favor for us to increase our volunteer pool, and even if we had certain sectors within our community that wanted to say, I'll come be, we'll be a volunteer medical force for you. That would be amazing. But for our students with the most complex medical issues, we do have to ensure that we're providing the services and the care that they need. And certainly through the Florida Department of Health, they're able to provide that at times. But this contract is specifically at $45 an hour for a registered nurse that we can pay in the event that we are unable to have the Florida Department of Health available at the time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Thora?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Vice Chair, for the clarifying statement. This is another example of the statute that we have to operate under. And I'm all about volunteers. In fact, I was recruiting in the audience before the meeting started tonight and the guy didn't leave, so maybe he really is interested. Love our volunteers. And in this situation, it's important for the community to know that we have kids with severe and significant seizure disorders, diabetes, all kinds of complex medical issues. We open our doors to any kid that comes in. And for that reason, I don't know that it would be appropriate to rely on volunteers for this particular need. I would think as a parent, I would expect, especially if it's on my child's IEP, that nurse would be available the whole time that the school day is happening with my kid in school. So if they have a seizure or a grand mal, that they can be attended to. So I'm glad you brought this up because it, it does warrant a reminder of all of the mandates and restrictions that the school system has to operate under. And, and this one is what's best for kids. And so therefore, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Thora. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve, schedule a public hearing to be held on June 28, 2022, to approve the 2022-2023 MCPS Mental Health Assistance Allocation Plan?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Browning, you pulled this one as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I certainly did. This is, like everything we do here, everything categorically, it's under statute. Everything we do is under our Constitution and our state Constitution. Mental health is an important issue and it does not belong to an institution like a school district. I am absolutely appalled that we would take 75%. We would look at 100% and categorize 75% as, as mentally healthy and then break them down by race and by sex as whether, like we're some sort of a clinic. We're a, an educational organization. And when the legislature is putting these things forward, they're looking for some kind of a crisis situation or, or essentially, they were looking for what is going on, what kind of a threat would be going on from outside the school system? That would be external. Mental health and wellness is critically important, but every person in this room at this moment needn't be analyzed for mental health and find that 75% pass our test. That is absurd. And I don't think it is the way the legislature intended. I don't believe that is the idea. Yes, if you see something that's improper, we certainly do need to address it. Yes, we need to bear down, but we don't have 25% of our people mentally ill in some category judged by a school district? I mean, this, this board member is just appalled by the way the statute is being, is being implemented. I, for one, will work very hard with our legislators and with the governor to see that this is drilled down to provide safety and care and kindness and decency. And everybody in this room, where you might have some issues, I don't know. It's certainly not our prerogative to decide whether you're mentally ill or not. And I just don't care for an institution taking that position. I will vote no for this. And I would like to see it be addressed in a different, a different way, a more open and a more appropriate way. And I am open to all dialogue on this subject. All dialogue, all suggestions, anything that makes the schools safer, the people healthier, and encourage the children and helps with our main mission, which is education, not mental health. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Any further discussion?
Chair, maybe, maybe I'm missing what this agenda item is for. But I, I believe this agenda item this evening is just for us to schedule that public hearing when we're able to have additional public comment and additional feedback
That is correct.
On June 28.
That is correct.
So while the dialogue is, is interesting at this juncture, I, I believe just today is for us to approve the scheduling of the public hearing so that between now and June 28, some of these questions may be able to be answered as well as the public be able to weigh in on the plan itself. We've now released the plan. We have about a month now for the public to look through it and ask questions, certainly send those questions to us, or not to us, but to staff. And they can address those similar to what Mr. Browning was saying as well. But to, to vote to disapprove on actually just scheduling the hearing, I'm not certain that is what you intended to do. Maybe it would to, intended to disapprove of the plan itself. But to actually schedule the hearing, I think that that would give us the opportunity to have more public input on June 28 than leading up to that date.
And, and thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. We have to have the hearing to be in accordance to the law, to the state. We have to submit a plan to the Commission of Education by August 1. So this is to state that we will be having a hearing on the 28 to get approval for the hearing and to have the public discussion. So if there's any further discussion?
Sure. Yes, thank you. Yes, I, I'm sensitive to Vice Chair Campbell's comments. And, and, and I, I'm persuaded. I like your, your point. I want to bring attention to the plan. And A41 would do that. However, I am persuaded by your, by your argument. And I will vote for it because the dialogue helps. And that is my interest, is the dialogue, not necessarily being right. Everybody has an opinion, but they don't have to be right. But they, we all benefit by having a board that discusses these issues and brings them up so that, so that everybody, whoa, they can get on board. They can, they can get excited, they can get interested. And let's fill the auditorium. Let's, let's bring, let's bring something different so that we have a better chance for success going forward and less chance for some of the negatives that have brought us down this last decade. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor signify by aye. Aye. Opposed, have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve Amendment Number 1 to the Construction Manager Contract Phase 1 Guaranteed Maximum Price for HVAC Replacement at North Marion Middle School Project Number 22-100.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thora. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled this item as well for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, this is, this is $11 million. Never should $11 million go under a bulk assignment, ever, no matter what. I, by bringing it on top of the table and uniquely out, I can again ask and advocate that we take ionic health approaches to all of these HVAC systems that go in. I know we're considering it. I want to advocate for it every time. We could have another pandemic at any time and we have closed rooms. And if it works for dental, OR, ER, it would work for schools and it does. So I bring it up. I also absolutely abhor open guaranteed maximum price items. I just want to see normal, I've never built a building and I've built a lot. I never built a building with a maximum price that could be spent. I like to see a solid bid. And when a solid bid goes forward, it, it has a way of saving money. And, and it's, it's something that I think we can work on going forward over the next five, 10 years, hundreds of millions of dollars savings and additional value could result. You never should get too busy to be prudent, especially with someone else's dollars. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Thora?
Yes, thank you. And these dollars are mine, too. You know, we're all taxpayers sitting up here. So every decision that we make doesn't just affect who's watching us. It affects who's sitting here as, as well. And it was mentioned earlier that we have brilliant people on our staff that are well-versed in, in what they do. And when they make these recommendations, when you take the time to talk to them, it's pretty amazing what they're able to accomplish in terms of cost savings and their level of experience and, and what they've done in their careers. So I think it is important for the community to understand that there's a, there's, there's a narrative and then there's what really goes on. So I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Chair, I just wanted to mention on the guaranteed maximum price. I, I hear what Mr. Browning is saying and the, the challenge that we have as a board and as the operations side of the House has to do what they have to do. Statutorily, we have to approve budget items and we have to approve whenever large expenses like this are, are going to take place. Because this board only meets twice a month, the way I see maximum pricing, and this is just my interpretation, the way I see that, and we, we see change orders come through all the time. As we saw, yeah, deductive change orders. And we, we have those things come through all the time. But the way I see it is so that this board, again, that only meets twice a month, is never holding up a project that's in process. And if we approve this project at 7 million, 8 million, whatever the number might be that we want to choose for that and not give them a maximum price perhaps, it may hold up the process of actually getting the AC units in the school in time for school to start. So I, I completely hear what your, your concerns are. And in, in most cases, perhaps if there was a way to tighten up the guaranteed maximum pricing, I think that we, that the was a way to tighten up the guaranteed maximum pricing, I think that we, that the team, I'm sure, could look into that. But for this particular one, especially when we're talking about air conditioning replacement in an entire school, I would prefer the work to be done and then obviously giving them that maximum option with them to come in with deductive orders should that be the case, so that we don't hold it up, just with this board having to approve every one of these expenses. Only meeting twice a month, and whenever the board packet has to be put together, you know, a month before that, it, it really can complicate the management and the operation of how they're able to get these things done.
Attorney Powers.
Just from a legal perspective, I want to make sure the board's aware that I routinely approve GMP contracts to, for the interests of the board to legal form. And one of those reasons is it's very attractive to the board because it shifts a significant amount of risk onto the party performing the work and away from us. Specifically, if there's cost overruns, labor materials prices go up, the maximum is the maximum, and the party absorbing that and minimizing their profit margin is the party performing the work, not the district who is just then asked to pay for an increasing and increasing amount, because depending upon labor materials costs, those amounts, and even work costs, those amounts can, can skyrocket in a, in a relatively brief period of time. And so that has been consistently noted as, as best practice for districts in, in many government entities in dealing with GMP contracts. Specifically also, it's that, and I made some notes, it's, it includes the cost of labor materials, an overhead, plus a percentage of that cost as the profit, and the total cost to us can be less than that guaranteed maximum price, but never more. So it really is a built-in insurance policy, and then we still hold them to a, a very detailed, itemized list of exactly how it's been spent, and, and they have to account for that. So the idea is that, you know, if they find out that their little, that the budget is, there's still plenty of money on there, and it were, you know, some idea that they would pad the bill or something like that, first of all, that's somebody we wouldn't want to continue to do business with. And we have some auditing in place to, to take care of exactly that sort of, of issue. So overall, I do feel that this is advisable, and it should continue as a, as a practice for the district where the board approves it.
Thank you, Attorney. Chair. Mr. Brownie?
Yes, thank you. And I, I, all due respect to the legal opinion, cost plus is never a good idea if you're, if, if you're prudent with dollars, never a good idea. Always a hard price is the way to go. If you're, anyone in here is going to build a building, you get a hard bid, and you open that up to reputable builders. Now, whatever goes up, goes down, if it Butler or whoever the building is manufactured by, or whatever, steel changes, that is part and parcel of construction. That's just what takes place. We do not endure that. Now, government, often at the high end, those things get padded, and they just go on, and they just, it's an ongoing, say, a rocket-type product, or the shuttle-type product, those things just go on and on, and they're metered and measured a certain way, because there's just not that many people that could make a space shuttle, for example. However, when you're building buildings, you've got to, you've got to look at the bid, don't rotate around the same people, you've got to keep it open, you've got to keep the pressure on in order to get full stewardship of your dollars. It's just that simple. I don't care, I don't care, I don't care. Make your bid, perform, you can have a performance bond, the building will get built, and if prices go up in the meantime, prices go up in the meantime, if you get some bargains in there, then you get some bargains, you make a little extra. But I would never, ever advise a cost plus. I just wouldn't do it. Then you just can, or liberty to go on, and sure, everybody's going to try and do their best, I guess, but you would just go on and spend what you spent and then put profit on top of it. So while I am not a member of the bar, I am a member of the, of the public that's out building and buying and interacting in business, and a normal business practice would be a solid bid. That's it. Forget it if you lose money. I'm not here to hold your hand. You can go home and cry to your mama, I don't care. I want the building built perspex, and there's going to be an insurance bond, and that's just the way it is. So I, I just don't agree, and we've got to stay on top of these things, and I think we do. I'm not saying we're not, I'm just saying we can tighten these things up. If they go along year after year after year, decade after decade, and then they get these practices going, it's probably not in the taxpayer's interest. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
And actually, Board Member Brownie, I would agree with you that cost-plus contracts are rarely a good idea. In fact, they're typically banned in federal and in many state things. Cost-plus contract is a different issue than a guaranteed maximum price contract. Cost-plus issue, as the project costs increase, the fee goes up as well. It's based on a percentage, and that's not what we're doing with the GMP here, just so you're aware.
I get that. I'm using it as an example, as a cost plus. It's, it's something that creeps in, and it is not a solid, we've used it, it's not a solid practice. And I guaranteed, okay, I get it, but it needs discussion. It needs to be on the top of the table, and we need to talk when we're dealing with over a million dollars. It's, it's that simple. And I also, it gives me an opportunity to speak toward these issues that are near and dear to my heart, and it's why the governor put me here, and that's to come in and make a conservative, business-like approach and engage with my fellow brilliant board members, and, and get involved in discussion and work it out, hash it out in a way that you'll never see on the internet, but you'll see here, especially if I'm involved and some of my other colleagues are involved. I've heard some excellent comments this evening as a result of the discussion. I think that is incumbent on us to do that. It's what we swore we would do when we, when we joined this, this board. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign? Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve second renewal agreement with the City of Ocala, DBA Ocala Fiber Network?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Brownie, I understand you pulled this item for discussion.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And specifically, life is, life is changing in a technical world. We're able to move data different ways. I don't, I, you know, I don't have a problem with this, but I want competition. I wonder how much competition we have with the city. It's like city utilities, that's pretty much a set thing. I would like to see, I'd like to see how we're competing on this item. It's a pretty good-sized item, and a greater cost is beyond the actual cost of moving data is the, are you, are you, are you in the latest and the greatest fashion of how you move electrons, how you move photons? What's going on? How are we moving data? And how expensive is it for a packet of data? And is this the coming thing, or are we in an old legacy way of operating? So when it's the city we're dealing with, I like competition. I like competition. What other alternatives do we have? You know, maybe we want to look at it ourselves, but at least when you're up over a million dollars, I want it on top of the table, and I'd like to see any ideas that anyone has in reference to this, for or against. Thank you, Chair.
From my understanding, this one is with Ocala Fiber Optic. We did do RFP, and Ocala, City of Ocala was selected based on the RFP, and this is a very advantageous partnership to enter into because of the, the dynamics of this contract and how it reduces, and we also get the E-rate with it. So this is one that we did the due diligence on as far as, on the competition by having the RFP sent out, and that's City of Ocala being selected. So I'm perfectly fine with this agreement, the renewal disagreement, and we'll see what happens on the, in the future renewal agreements.
Chair.
Vice Chair Campbell.
And I, I too am completely fine with this as a customer of Ocala Fiber Network. I know exactly how this operates as well, and, and reading into it, it, obviously, the yearly cost for services is going to be reduced each year because they ran all of these fiber lines to all of the, I remember when the board approved running Ocala Fiber Network out to our Dunellen schools, and because through the RFP process, it was determined that Ocala Fiber Network was certainly going to be the best in, in that process for us. And so this is into 47 metropolitan area network schools. And, and so throughout that, because they essentially incur all the cost upfront, then all of our bills subsequent years actually do get reduced a bit, similar to the way they do it in the residential communities as well. I agree with Chair Cummings that, especially with the E-rate revenue and, and the other partnerships that Ocala Fiber Network has come in, they're a business partner to, I don't know how many schools that we have through the Public Education Foundation. So I'm not saying that they wouldn't do this if we weren't having this contract with them, because I don't think that's how they operate either, but we certainly have been able to, to get a lot of benefit. And again, as a fiber network customer myself, I can assure you that the service that is provided through Ocala, Ocala Fiber Network has been incomparable to what everybody else had been doing. We had other, in my own home, and it, this has been such a, a better opportunity for us in our home, and I know it, it's a great opportunity for our students in our schools as well.
Mr. Brownie?
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the Chair and Vice Chair for those comments. That is exactly what I'm looking for when, when I bring an item of a million dollars plus. Are we actually doing a great job? Yes. If we're doing a great job, let's celebrate it, let's get it out there, and it lets every vendor know that we dig in and we look at these things, and we look at them hard, and our staff looks at them hard. This is, this, we're going to be approaching a billion dollars, and we've got to get so sharp and so appropriate to achieve, and I think, I think accolades should go to the county, or to the city. If in fact they're nailing it like this, they ought to be able to have some customers, put it on top of the table, talk about the million dollars, and perhaps have some staff say that we have actually saved an additional million dollars, and our data is moving quicker, and it's less expensive to move the data. If that's the case, then that's worth discussing in a business meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? There being none. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign? Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of $7,000. $1,000 to Bellevue Elementary School from Sarah Fitzgerald Good News Club, $1,000 to Hillcrest Public School from Gary Adele and Terry Cole, $2,500 to Madison Street Academy of Visual Performing Arts from Fine Arts of Ocala, for Ocala and Corp. FFO, $2,500 to Westport High School from Chai Pathy Giulio. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Second by Board Member Thor. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign? Pass unanimously. Board Member Thor, can you thank the public for these donations?
Absolutely. We are always grateful for the donations that we receive. They're various in nature, and we appreciate, appreciate each and every one of them. Tonight's donations came to support the Good News Club at Bellevue Elementary, as you mentioned, $1,000 to Hillcrest for our students with the most significant special needs, $2,500 for our Fine Arts Elementary School, and then Westport High School. And it's always interesting to me to see where all of the donations come from. You know, they come from everywhere, across the community, corporations, private citizens, and then there's quite a few that don't, that want to remain anonymous. So thank you each and every time.
Thank you. The following administrative briefing and work sessions are scheduled for June 2nd, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss general insurance renewal review 2022, 2023, and disposition of tangible property process. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for June 16th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss college student conduct, the naming of the Early Learning Academy, and utilization of federal relief dollars and expected student outcomes. All right. Attorney Powers, anything tonight?
Yes, sir. Just briefly, I just wanted to inform the board that I will be listing and requesting advertisements for rulemaking and development starting prior to July 12th for our, actually, I'll be doing it on, it looks like in June for our final policy approval, and I'm going to set that for our, one of our school board meetings. The one that I had selected, it's the nearest after our advertising time, is July 12th. As you know, the board has already given its consensus for all of the policies that it reviewed, and those policies have been cleaned by Neola. And once we have completed our advertising time for rulemaking and development, then we hold a public hearing in which public may have input, and once we've advertised that, then we can have our meeting, and that would be July 12th.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. That's it?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Elena Martinez-Lopez?
No, sir. Thank you.
Glad to see you back. Superintendent.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, just briefly, a few items. First one, more of a housekeeping note based on your decision as a board for the pilot of the school board meeting times. As a reminder, June 28th is the first daytime meeting, which will begin at 9:00 a.m. Again, as a reminder, during the pilot, the first meeting of each month would be in the evening, and the second school board meeting would be in the morning. So that would be June 28th, that's the first morning meeting of this pilot, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Other items that I have just to share, everyone knows this, last week of school, last day is Thursday, however, summer school begins June 6th, so we look forward to having our students, many of our students with us this summer. And for those who aren't, please keep learning, please keep reading, working on your math, and all of the other subject areas that you're engaged with. Learning never stops, so, and be safe. I also want to thank you, board members. We're still doing this, but it's important to mention it now. Appreciate your support in going out to schools with me as we recognize teachers and our thankful project. And for those who may not be aware, we're doing this for the first time, and we're presenting some very special thanks to teachers, letters that were written by students. One that we did last week was written from a teacher that they had 10 years prior, and the impact, the lives that these teachers have had. This is just a small representation, but it's a, it's a great honor to go out and say thank you and read letters from students directly and present those to the teachers. So thank you for participating and recognizing our outstanding employees.
Thank you, Superintendent. Vice Chair Campbell? I'll start with you tonight.
Thank you. So first of all, I, I just want to say, I know we, we started the meeting this way, but my heart is just breaking for those families and, that are impacted by this Texas Elementary School incident that occurred today. Thank you, Chair Cummings, for that moment of silence, and just know that our thoughts and prayers are continuing to be with them.
And just know that our thoughts and prayers are continuing to be with them now and in the foreseeable future. God help us all. Also want to say thank you to Attorney Powers for that Neola policy update because I'm so excited that it's almost here. We did so much work on that, and now we're almost seeing the finish line. Light is at the end of the tunnel. Thank you for mentioning the Thankful Project. Thank you for mentioning the Thankful Project, Dr. Gullett. It has been emotional and inspiring and amazing. So thank you, Dr. Gullett, for your leadership on, on bringing that project to Marion County. The one teacher that I was with you and, and saw and the, the emotion in the teacher and how distinctly she remembered the students so well and the impact, the significant impact that the teacher made. While we certainly want to ensure that our teachers are compensated well, and we certainly want to make sure that they have a good working environment and et cetera, just hearing the impact that they make in students' lives sometimes is thanks enough. And so that's why it's called the Thankful Project. So that was an amazing experience. So thank you for that. Thus far, I've enjoyed the Forest High School graduation, as well as awards programs at Bellevue High School, Osceola Middle, and the graduation for Dr. N.H. Jones. All of, most of those were actually personal because I had children participating in those things. But I was grateful also to receive the invitation to attend even award shows that my students, my own children, weren't participating in. Also with last evening's Take Stock graduation event through the Public Education Foundation, and then the upcoming Lakewood High School graduation that I'll be participating in. So that's, it's just such a wonderful time to see all the hard work that our seniors have put forth throughout, and seniors and fifth grader who are graduating and eighth grader who are moving on. It, it's just a great time to see. And those bridging ceremonies that I've seen on social media with the kindergarteners going, bridging into first grade, there's just a lot of great movement literally happening in our district. And so it's exciting to see that. But I also want to stress that we do still have two more days of school, and I'm going to say without backpacks, because I think every school should not be having backpacks any longer, I think, from what I understand. I know my youngest brought home a backpack that weighed about ten pounds today, full of all kinds of things. So I know that my older children have been without backpacks. And also, final exams are still taking place. So parents, if there's anybody listening, please ensure your students are taking these next two days just as seriously as they have every other school day. Because I know, even though my children are very frustrated that they still have final exams the last two days of school, we have education and instruction all the way to the very last day of school. And that's purposeful and intentional, and that's why it is that way. As Dr. Gullett would say, bell-to-bell instruction. We're going to go all the way to the last day of school and ensure that our students are, are present and accounted for so they're getting their work done. I, I was grateful for our meeting that we held last work session, talking so much about the development in the community. And I know that we kind of left it with that we were going to have another meeting of the municipalities. And I didn't know if that's in our court. I'll, I'll let you address that, but I know that you requested it. So I just was going to ask if the ball's in our court or if we're waiting on staff or someone else to do that. Because I think we do need to operate with expedience and, and trying to bring everybody to the table so we can have those candid conversations collectively. The information that we received on Thursday was quite different than what we received at our last intergovernmental meeting. So I think that it would be very helpful to have that sooner rather than later. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring up, and bear with me, I kind of wrote quite a bit here that I, what I wanted to share, because I've had several conversations lately about the pathway that this district is heading on. And I am excited to say that our strategic plan that we work so diligently on is continuing to drive a lot of our discussions. While using that strategic plan as a focus for everyone is a mindset shift for some, as soon as everyone begins to use it, not in isolation or silos, but as our driving force, then we will really start seeing major change. Some time ago, Dr. Gullett gave us the book Leadership on the Line. And there are many principles in that book that express exactly the challenges that leaders often experience when trying to move the needle in the right direction. I often quote Dr. Gullett when she says, "Sometimes what's best for students is really hard for adults." Let me say that again. I quote her, maybe even misquote her, but I use this quote all the time after I heard her say it once. Sometimes what's best for students, I'm going to even say oftentimes, what's best for students is really hard for adults. I understand change is hard. I understand doing things differently than they've always been done can ruffle some feathers, but it doesn't mean the changes still aren't what's best for students. Whether it's changing how we do work orders and tech services to have better tracking of efficiency and productivity, or it's moving to school and site-based budgeting to essentially have money follow our students, whether it's starting to ensure zoning lines matter without potentially unethical practices that some families are using to game the system, or it's making tough and sometimes strategic employment decisions. As long as we keep students first as our beacon, knowing student success is our core business, we will not go wrong ever. If adults struggle with the changes being made to the status quo, status quo has kept this district in the bottom third for years. So I'm all in for changes that will help us move the needle for positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to address the question about the intergovernmental meeting, Attorney Powers was getting with their other attorneys, correct?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The number of items, one, let me pass these out if you would.
I can do that, Mr. Brown.
This is a, this is an essay that I bring forward. It's from the Second District, and it happened to have gotten an A+ by the board member from the Second District. This is Mr. Master Luke Braun. He, he took it on himself to really do a solid analysis on homework and the idea of homework. And the subject is somewhat incidental. Read the, read the arguments. I think they're very valid, and I think it's a good time to bring these up as we move into the summer. Often, homework can dominate a child's life, especially if it is in the multi-hour realm. I personally, we've, we've talked about it on this, on this board. I was not a big homework guy. I was a big guy, I was a guy out there playing baseball, working jobs, doing things, being a caddy, whatever, big family. We did, we did a lot. And I always felt for the people that had to stay in and I kind of get tied up and, and lose life, lose the opportunity for life and be under stress. That's what he addresses here. And I think it's very, very exciting. What I'd really also like to see, also, I'll say, I had a whole career of helping doctors who in, absolutely, they, they get stuck in academics, they go up through their twenties in academics, they go up through medical school in academics, they lose out on life so often, we've got to be thankful to all that they do. Then they go into residency, and it's difficult, and so often they miss out on life. And I, I have had to sit down with many a doctor and just explain how life takes place of what they missed. So while you may achieve academics, you miss on the other way. May achieve in life, you miss on academics. So a balance is the key. But what I'd like to see is more of this beautiful thought process coming to this board and, and, and out to the people, perhaps even have a, an A+ level on our website where some of these beautiful things get out and people can see this thought process and the, and the magnificent thinking that takes place. Yes, here's the next one for, for the superintendent. My apologies. And as well, I have one here for you, Attorney Powers. So perhaps that's something we can consider going into next year and, and having, and this could be in chemistry, it could be in, in, in writing, in reading, the, the best, you know, the best authors, the, all these, all these achievements. And again, I was with the superintendent and we, we, we were doing that thank you note program. Very touching. Everybody has that teacher. And, and I advise you, if you haven't, reach back to them. If they're still around, reach back to them and, and give them a thanks. And if they did you dirty, give them the raspberry, you know, let them know they could have done a better job. Because, you know, everybody tries their best and, and a little bit of feedback is often helpful. Next item I'd like to see addressed is a, a, next year, I want to address, and this is just a thing, but it's, I want to address our logo. I have never, ever found the first person who ever looked, maybe from the auditorium, looked at the top of a mortarboard, ever, ever. And I won't even describe what I think it looks like, but I would say we need to get all over that thing and perhaps have a major contest for it. It's just, I'm, I'm advocating that. Media production, I, I got the privilege of a, of a tour now at a couple of the high schools, and, and Forest had an exceptional program. I watched their video on their daily production, and it's incredible. We're missing a huge opportunity here for our students, for our, our professors, our teachers. They need to be able to benefit by this production. They need to be able to hit a home run and get in competition and, and compete for the, for the honor of, of getting the YouTube video out. I mean, these people are on their game. And I mean DPI, that's astounding, just incredible. And we could, we could benefit dollar-wise enormously. We, it would take forever to create this kind of a venue. This is real life, and we could do it in an academic sense. And I don't know, it just, we could, we look at the numbers, I know what they are, but we could look at the numbers and save all that and, and spend it, you know, in another arena. The windmill tax is being brought up. Yes, we're looking at it. I don't think it's needed. I do think that prudent use of the dollars and, and being grateful and being appreciative to our, our residents that come here, they don't bring children. We did get that report, and that report didn't change. It was decades long. I'd like to know why it changed. And then the news got, got ahold of it, and suddenly we had a tsunami of new students. And that's just not happening. Birth rates are not changing. Retirees are not swamping the, the school district with, with young children. It's just not the case. And so it's been a flat line for years. It's likely to be projected out as a flat line. It might increase some, I think, judicious use of our buildings. And we got to stop putting other projects, other programs into a school like this one. This one, oh, just, just couldn't function anymore. That was fifteen years ago and still a great facility. A little bit of maintenance is a great facility. So often, I think we have resources and we got to use them, use them, use them better. We do have a flat line nationally. Maybe, maybe if Roe versus Wade changes or something, maybe we'll have a whole big population boom. I would hope that that would be the case, and if it was, I'd be, I'd be first in line to build a whole bunch of schools. On Robert's Rules, I would like to make the statement clearly that when a member of this board is named individually, they must, under Robert's Rules, have an opportunity to correct or at least to address the issue and not wait a week. That is just improper. It is not the way Robert's Rules actually operates. No one position is more powerful than another position. And I do have to set the record straight. We have this individual, Mr. Bob Schmidt, a, a noted U.S. Navy veteran and a member of our, my team that does textbook assignments. I see another member out here. We have, we have this, he's the chairman of that group, that committee, and he absolutely did nothing wrong, and it's improper that he be, that be stated publicly that he did anything wrong and that he does not work for anybody here. He is a volunteer and he's a recognized, fully accredited volunteer. And we must treat our volunteers with the highest level of respect. The man did absolutely nothing wrong, and this is multiple times he's been castigated in the, in the press, and that's not going to happen under my venue. It's just improper. Let's see. The, I was so pleased to see a word of Stanton Wearsdale being brought forward by, by the general, general population. We had the incident with a, with a stop sign being run. Every stop sign counts. And the only place that I know of in the state of Florida at the end of a public road is in front of the Stanton Wearsdale School. And yes, I use stop sign because that's critical. That's like a pivotal point. That's like a symbol. So that stop sign must go in. We must correct that, that survey. We must make it clear that we have to, we demand safety at the front entrance to that school, Stanton Wearsdale School. And we must acknowledge, at least I acknowledge, that it's becoming what's called the Stanton Wearsdale Solution. And that is any, any minority or otherwise, community that fell behind for whatever reason, maybe social status, maybe whatever, that falls behind, we're going to use the Stanton Wearsdale Solution, whether it be in Tampa, Panama, Miami, anywhere, to come in and address it and figure out why there are no sidewalks, why there hasn't been paving. And it could be something as simple as in our case, a bad, a bad decision on a bad survey that, that just caused sixty-five years of problems. So I, I'm very heartened by the fact that we have, we have the, the public, the news media, big shout out to Channel, Channel Twenty, one of the people that comes, that come down, they went down and interviewed the people down there. All of that really matters. And ultimately, we will have the Stanton Solution. And I invite everyone to get your scissors. We're going to have like a quarter mile tape. And when the, we'll, I'll just pledge I'll get the governor down here to release it. And when we blow the bugle and we clip that ribbon, everybody can take a section of a quarter of a mile of ribbon and, and take it home as a, as a souvenir, as a reminder of when Stanton Wearsdale got their full due and got their stop sign, got the rest of their walk-in zone unitary status items. Thank you, board. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I, I don't have a whole lot tonight. I just wanted to share that it, as everyone knows, it's graduation season, and we started, we always kick it off, it seems, with the Hillcrest School graduation first. And that certainly sets the tone for, for the excitement and, and the thankfulness to all of the, the teachers and staff and leadership that makes it happen in each and every high school for kids. And it's especially special at Hillcrest because a lot of our students are there for eleven years. They're able to start as sixth graders and they can stay until their twenty-second birthday. So they really do become like, like family. And, and to see So they really do become like, like family and, and to see the opportunity for their growth and their development and how they're able to function so successfully in the community. I think that's how I know that I really did something as a teacher, when I run into my students in the community and, and they always come up to me and say one of two things if they're verbal, which is, I, I have a job and let me tell you about it, or I'm looking for a job. So I, I think they know over the years what I've expected. It is a joyous time, it's, it's also a time to remember to be safe and I know that that's something that you'll touch on again, Chair. It's, there's just so many opportunities to have such a good time and, and we want to temper that with getting home, the, the same way that, that we went out. The whole community just loves and salutes our, our students and their families and this mission of, of public education certainly means the world, not only to me, but so many others. And it is a tremendous time of celebration. I'd also like to thank Dr. Livinggood and, and Mr. Frazier and whoever else was involved behind the scenes, like I'm sure there were many, to make sure that our regalia was all pressed and dry cleaned. That, that was pretty special and, and I really appreciate that. So just those little touches really, really make a difference, people appreciate that and, and you never know where and when it's gonna come from. We acknowledged our Marion after-school program a couple of meetings ago and I do what I usually do, you know, go out into the audience and, and talk to people and see what, why they're here and, and what they're up to. And I got the nicest thank you note from that group, just for taking the time, you know, to thank them and hear what they had to say. And so in the end, in my mind, it's always pretty simple, you know, just do the simple things well, over and over and, and you'll be just fine. And, and with that in mind, I'm, I'm very interested in our perennially high-performing districts and, and what it is that sets them apart and that continues their success year after year, not just one year of an A district, but perennial high performers. And an area that we have a tremendous opportunity for growth and we saw that tonight, tonight's agenda really was centered around academics, you know, math, reading. Sadly, a lot of our million-dollar-plus programs are intervention-related. And what that means is, is that we have too many students that didn't get it the first time, you know. And when I look at the other high-performing districts or at districts that are higher performing than us, what I see is that there are 10 readiness skills that the kids in those districts have accomplished, they have met those early milestones. And that has positioned them for success throughout their school years. If a student can be successful through third grade, then all of the research shows that they have got those foundational skills to, to be good learners and to continue to accelerate their progress. So I really look forward to the day when our kids and our district are the masters at proficiency and move away from being the masters at recovery. We are where we are now and having been in the district for a very long time, I can say with certainty that there is a cohesion now at every level that I've never seen before. And it's not because I'm on the school board, it's because there is a new culture that is being born and that is growing. And I do believe that the strategic plan is the blueprint and, and the roadmap for that. It makes sense. So while we have had a lot of challenges through the years and those of you that follow local politics know exactly what I'm talking about, there's been upheaval, there's been distress and from my perspective, I feel like we're finally getting to the point where we're pulling on the same side of the rope. There's always going to be challenges with communication with 43,000 students, 7,000 employees, but the progress that I have seen is not only commendable, but incredibly encouraging to me personally because of where I'm sitting, but also be, for myself as a citizen. You know, we are growing very quickly and, and the competitive nature and how fast the world's changing today creates that sense of, of even more urgency, while at the same time preserving the things that makes our district so special. You know, that, that family feeling, that having each other's backs, looking out for each other, you know, we rise and fall together. So it, it, it is difficult to hear the district sort of being bashed and, and sharing that, you know, we're not worth 41 cents a day to maintain all of the things that we've been able to accomplish. You know, the funding referendum was about restoring art, music, PE, library, none of those are tested subjects, but we all know that they're important. So please keep in mind that this ballot initiative is not to increase taxes, it is... hopefully put out a fire.
We're back on. Ms. Thor, sorry about that.
That's okay, I just want to congratulate all the adults, clearly we still know how to participate in a fire drill. And I, I will wrap it up, I got passionate and started to speak from my heart and I said I didn't have that much to say, but when I start talking about kids and the future of Marion County Public Schools, it definitely strikes a chord with me. And just a couple of quick inaccuracies that I also wanted to point out, we can't use property taxes for school construction and it was something that we talked about at length when we were trying to decide what to do about the funding referendum. And one of our concerns was, the county commission has penny sales tax going on for their road construction. So, you know, you think about competing items and, and again, you know, all the decisions that we make certainly affect my pocket and so I keep that in mind when I decide whether or not to, to support something. So I still believe that it's the right thing to do to put it on the ballot and that's what the American way is, is all about, you know, you, you vote your values, you vote your conscience and you see where it ends up. I was thrilled during our development workshop to have so many from the private sector here. We're, we're getting good participation, we're getting good ideas and we're also getting some commitment of funds. And when that continues, it will give us the ability to do things that we didn't think that we would be in the realm of, of being able to do in a fiscally responsible way and staying in our lane of, of what our mission is. So, you know, I just try to keep in mind that it's political season, there's going to be all kinds of speakers coming in with, with all kinds of different things to say and, and that's wanted and needed and appreciated. But I certainly hope that anyone that has tuned in tonight or that will be tuning in when they have time to do that, continues to support our schools, continues to support our mission and, and really takes it to heart that, you know, while, while the media does a great job of, if it bleeds, it leads, you know, so they are going to make sure that that gets splashed all over the news, I would encourage anyone in this community to come visit our schools, become part of Leadership MCPS. It, it really gives a thorough understanding of, of what truly is happening in our schools. Do we have outlier situations? Absolutely. And that's why it's great that you have active board members that actually visit their schools and actually interact and actually see what's going on in the classrooms. So when I get a phone call, I can follow up and I can follow up with assurance that something that doesn't sound quite right is gonna be addressed. And that's who we are, make no mistake. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Yes, I agree. Actually, I heard some things involving my school tonight that did not sound quite, quite right and I will make that phone call tomorrow morning to see if it is accurate or not or if it's just something that people, you know, say that may or may not be true. I would like to bring up, tonight we voted on the salaries for unrepresentative, unrepresented employees. And it's been brought to my attention that we probably need to take a closer look between now and the next time and we vote on that, to just make sure that things are aligned or just, it doesn't hurt to take a good look at it. And it looks like, hopefully, I've been hearing like the IEPA and the MEA and the MESP, they're gonna be meeting this summer. So hopefully by September, we're gonna know probably where everybody is standing and so, but I would also like just encourage, you know, us to take a look at that matrix for next year. And then also, Monday is Memorial Day. That day is United States holiday, unique to us, but it is to honor our fallen heroes. And so as we all are having our barbecues and family or vacation or whatever we're doing, just take that time just to remember the true meaning of what Memorial Day is.
Yeah, it's not a celebration.
It is not a celebration. So anyways, that's all I have this evening, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of you, our board members, I appreciate each and every one of you and your comments on, on tonight. I appreciate the comments that we also got from the public, some things that took good notes on. We'll be checking into some of these, these issues that were brought forth by the public. Thank you, Board Member Thor, for clarifying about what referendum can be used for and what it cannot be used for. I think sometimes people, I think sometimes the public may think that we can just alter the language and just use it for whatever. However, it's very specific on, on what you can use it for and you can't use it to build buildings, build schools. So I appreciate you for clearing that up as well. Also to you, Ms. King, for reminding everyone that Memorial Day is not a, a holiday per se, not a celebration per se, but it's a, it's a day to honor those who have fallen, who have fallen for this country, who have fallen for service. So I pray that we have a safe, safe Memorial Day. Very important that we have a very safe, very important, we have a safe holiday. Also, we've started the graduation season, congratulations to all of our graduates that have already walked across the stage and some that will be walking across the stage in the next few days or a couple of weeks. I was sitting here thinking about the ones that I've attended, I've attended Hillcrest and Denonlin High School and Forrest High School and, and Westport High School and so far, Mr. Frazier and I were at all of those and we've, we've 14, over 1,400 hands, over 1,400 hands that we've gone through. And I want to commend those, all the graduates so far. Graduation is a unique time of the year and it's, it's entertaining, for me, it's entertaining, for me, it's reflective and it's also a time for me to see what the new fashions are. Because you see a whole lot of stuff that you would not have seen and it brings me up to speed, it keeps me in the know of what's going on, what's the trends and what these kids are, are doing. And parents, I know you have to be extremely excited about your child, your, your son or daughter moving to the next chapter in their lives and, and doing in the safe way and the accomplishment that they've done to get to this milestone in their life. I, I wanna give a special shout out to Westport and their families, the students. I really wanna give a shout out to the valedictorian at, at Westport. Some of you know it, I know Mr. Frazier knows it very well because we stood there in the rain, a torrential rainstorm on Saturday when it, when, soon as she started giving her valedictorian speech, it started raining. And it didn't stop raining and it rained and it rained and it rained. And this young lady persevered in spite of the rain and she, in spite of people getting up and going to the stands and coming out, the students getting out of their chairs and going to get umbrellas and she kept giving her valedictorian speech. And that was, um, that was, um, remarkable to me, but it was a sign of what these kids are. They're persistent. They persisted throughout this pandemic. They persisted, they've been persistent through, uh, the 12 or 13 years of school that they've been in. And she kept pressing on. So I wanted to commend her. I, I told her and the salutatorium, because she had to come up behind her and do the same thing in the rain. And it just kept going and going and gone. I want to commend, um, the principal Ginger Cruz and the entire, uh, team out there at, um, Westport because in, in the midst of the rain, we got to the letter's M. You know, Westport had, uh, 650-plus kids graduating. We got to the M's and all of a sudden I was like, "Okay, Mr. Frazier, it looked like I'm seeing lightnings. Looked like I'm seeing lightning." And originally it wasn't a lightning, it was the guy taking pictures to flash. But finally, he saw the lightning. And when he saw the lights, like, "Reverend Cummings, I think it's time for us to go." And we had to stop. We had to stop graduation at the M's. And by this time, we were soaked, but everybody else was soaked, all the kids were soaked. And to see the poise of our staff, how they handled the situation, how they made a pivot at a moment's notice, they are to be commended because, um, we had to get our kids safe, make sure everyone was safe. We pivoted and made them, get them back into the expo. Um, and then to watch the weather report and see that this wasn't going away soon and to come up with some ulterior, uh, ultimate, uh, alternate plans so that it could still be a memorable graduation. You guys did a tremendous job, Mr. Frazier. I want to commend you for the decisions that you made on the, Johnny on the spot and, um, Principal Cruz and the entire team. Some kids chose to go after they got their diploma, but there was a group of kids that said, "I, I waited 13 years." They went to kindergarten. I waited 13 years to cross a stage. I'm crossing somebody's stage tonight and they stayed. And they did get the opportunity to cross the stage and they get, uh, did get the opportunity to shake our hands. So I want to commend them and those families that we made a way for the families to get back in and we were still able to stream it to the, um, to the stand. So it was truly a memorable. They won't forget their, they will never forget their, uh, graduation 2022 from Westport High School. And I'm, I promise you, I won't forget it either, cause I was drenched from head to toe. So I do want to commend them and the kids for their poise as well. But also, um, while I'm thinking about graduation, um, I, I think about my graduation, I think about my kids that have graduated their graduation. And I think about how oftentimes as, as teenagers, as high schools, they get in a rush to live life. They get in a rush to, "I can't wait till I'm at my parents' house. I can't wait till I'm this, can't wait till I'm that." I want to give you just a tad bit of advice. Slow down. Slow down. Enjoy the ride. Because once you're out, you're out. You can't go back and redo high school and have the same memories. So create, create great memories now. Enjoy every minute, in every minute of graduation and grad bash and prom and all those types of things. Enjoy it and make it memorable so that when you get to your 10-year reunion, your 20-year reunion, or like me, you're approaching your, your, uh, 35-year reunion, you can be appreciative of, uh, the times that you spent in high school. Kirsten, I think of all the great times we had right here in this building when pep rallies and the things, walk on the halls of this campus. They're memories, they're memories. And it's because we enjoyed high school. So I want to encourage these young people to enjoy this time and do it responsibly. Please be safe. Please make sure that, um, the things that you're doing will not hinder or hamper you from going to the next level or the next level, but celebrate and celebrate responsibly. And those are my comments for tonight. We're going to continue on with our meeting. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received alternative placement lists for students through April 26, 2022. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's dispenary matter? There being none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J D 22-128 with educational services for the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year and the entire 2022, 2023 school year? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. In the discussion, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign, pass unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass me unanimously. Meeting is adjourned at 7:43 PM.